We're going to call the meeting order.
Oh, you've got to wait until like the show starts.
The Doug Show again?
No, wait, okay.
There you go.
Okay, we'll call our meeting order, the Prairie Municipal Authority. Martin, would you give us?
You may.
You want to do real call for it?
Yeah.
Real call. You said it. You're all here.
All right. Stroller?
Here.
Demant?
Here.
Duke?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Norman?
Nation?
Here.
Wade?
Here.
Warner?
Here.
Call.
We have a call. Reverend Foster, please.
Let's pray to God. Lord, thank you for your love and grace, and thank you for this community in which we live. Lord, we thank you for allowing us these leadership positions, and thank you for those that we represent, and we ask that you give us wisdom that we can represent those we serve, and that all the decisions would be for the community's best, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Martin. First item of business is our consent agenda. Is there any items that we need to remove from that?
Motion to put the consent agenda.
Second.
Real call.
Stroller?
Yes.
Demant?
Aye.
Duke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Next item, we want, does anyone have any comments from the assembly out here? Any of you have any comments? If you have none, next item of business, proclamation, commendation, reports, inquiry, by the governing body. Do we have any reports that we need to make in this KMA? We have none? Item six, new business? Any new business coming forward with KMA?
Motion is adjourned.
Second. Second. Real call.
Stroller?
Yes.
Demant?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Item one, consent agenda. Is there any items in part A or B that need to be removed?
I would like to remove item B three and B nine.
Three and nine.
I was just going to scramble to see what I just said.
Well, yeah.
I'm, uh...
Bingo.
Do we have a motion considering the others?
Some of them.
Second. Yeah, second.
Stroller?
Yes.
Demant?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Now, we'll consider those that were asked to be removed. What do you have?
Actually, what, and I didn't have any issue with either one of them, which, and what we're talking about is the fire department report and the police department report. I like both of the reports, but I like, I would like both of them to have both characteristics, I suppose, and I don't know if we can do this, which what we're doing right now is the fire department is breaking down, ambulance runs inside, outside, transfers, what the different types of cases that they're dealing with are, but then we don't see their hours and overtime and what have you, whereas on the police department report, we're getting hours worked in the department, overtime hours written, what they're actually doing. I would like to, I would kind of like to, like, break down the cases and see what we're what we're actually dealing with specifically there, something like the fire department's doing. Basically, just get the best of both of them, is what I was, that was what my thoughts were. I didn't have an issue with either one, I just kind of like to see both of them, if that's doable. That doable?
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen, I've seen police reports breaking it down in categories.
To the types of offenses.
Types of offenses.
Yeah, something like that.
And then, and then over on the fire, you want more on time and overtime, right?
Yeah. I just think it'd be more useful information if we had all that.
Yeah.
So, on fire, you said hours worked and overtime, is that what you said?
Yeah.
In addition to the breakdown?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have to turn that into time and overtime?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion that does need approval, as presented with the potential that we get those changed in the future. Is that a proper motion?
Close enough.
Okay. That's my motion.
Second. Real call.
Okay, I'll try to get that on out. Okay, Stroller?
Yes.
Demant?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any comments from those assembled that need to be made tonight? See none, hearing none? Proclamation, commendation, reports, inquiries? Do we have anybody? Anyone that needs to make any inquiries? Thank you. Now, we turn to our city manager's report.
I just have a few items, it'll be pretty short, and then I'll give all my, the balance of my time to Russ for his report, so.
Yes.
Anyway. First item is application of pre-emergent at parks and city facilities. Isn't it amazing how brown turns green so quickly throughout the community? But anyway, city crews have finished, just about finished applying pre-emergent to the parks and at all of our city facilities, and so obviously, this will help reduce the amount of money of mowing required when we receive all that rain that we're expecting this spring. So, oh, very little. Item two, city pool ADA compliance. The Americans with Disabilities Act, the pool guidelines have now become law, and these revised guidelines do require our pool to offer an additional means for access, for entry and exit from the pool, and that's for disabled patrons. The law was actually signed into effect on July 26 of 2010, and that requirement has kept being extended over the time, but it's for real this time. January 31 of 2013 was the effective date for that requirement. We've been in contact with pool suppliers. We're probably looking around $4,000 to acquire the lift and have it installed, and we do plan to have it in place by the time the pool opens, but if we don't, if we're making a good take of it, we should be fine with as far as compliance, because if, you know, if everybody is scurrying to get this done, by the time their pool opens, we may, may get into a time crunch with delivery of whatever the chair is that we decide on, but our, every effort will be made to get that done, so be in compliance. On the water plant update, earlier this month, Steve Reddy, the plant superintendent, met with Dr. Ollie Fazell at Accurate Labs concerning raw water issues and treatment options, and so we've been, you know, working with them on the issues that we've been having at the water plant and meeting our standards, and some of the clinical trials that they worked on have had some good positive results, others not as promising, so Steve's working with Accurate Labs to kind of fine tune the process and as best we can to get the results that we need to have to meet those standards. The bulldozer is being put to good use out at the water plant, digging out the sledge drying bed, and we made a little field trip out there today, and they have moved a lot of dirt, and so we're figuring about 70 to 75 percent complete with that part of the process, and so, and that little bulldozer looks kind of little out there, actually, in that big, big pit. You know, it looks big when you're up close to it, but it looks kind of low when it's down there in the bottom of that pit. Next item is the, last week, City of Perry sponsored a blood drive, and Sherry Cowan, bless her heart, is our blood drive coordinator, and she works really hard to try to get people to turn out for that. The goal was 15 donors, and of the 14 who came and were willing to donate, 12 of those were eligible, and we're looking at ways to attract more donors for the next drive, so that...
Is that just for city?
No, it's for everybody.
Okay.
So, I think, you know, we, we kind of target some, you know, different areas, but it could be for anybody, you know, even Lynn.
That's right.
And my elderly wife.
Oh. And I donated, too. You are going to get in so much trouble.
He said that before, but I don't think he's ever said it on TV.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry. It's back on track here, I'm sorry. Ambulance district sales tax, Perry received our portion of the ambulance district sales tax last week in the amount of $67,334.77, and this covers November, December of 2012 and January of 2013, and so from here on, we should be getting it on a monthly basis since sales tax is remitted on a monthly basis. So, we have not received the ad valorem, I don't know when that will be, but it should be soon, because most of that is pretty well, has been collected, most of what's been collected is, or what will be collected has been collected. City of Perry has some employment opportunities for part-time, part-time grounds maintenance workers, various departments add on some part-time people during the summer to keep up with the grass, like cemetery, the airport, whom am I missing? I'm sure there's parks. So, there's probably street, I can't remember who all, but anyway, several departments will be adding on some part-time grounds maintenance folks, and so we're trying to get applications for that, and we've been, we're pretty close to finishing up hiring, the hiring process for several positions, and so we hope to get those folks on board fairly soon, and that's my report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, now...
I do have a question. Where's the time you were going to leave me? It's short.
You can start now.
Sorry, sir. Didn't mean to interrupt.
Out of words.
Go ahead.
Oh, all right. Well, she said she was going to leave me time early when we were talking about this, and, man, I didn't realize that she was going to leave me like two minutes to talk to you guys. You guys do have your financials, we're bringing through February, as, kind of, heck, I almost feel like this year's over, just today, first draft of the budget went to Mary, so we've already even started on looking at next year, so as we're starting to run through these numbers, I'm already thinking about some of the things we're talking about for next year, getting those caught up, and in front of you, and the department members are going to meet with Mary this week and get kind of turnout related to that, and so hopefully we'll, we will start pushing budgets through in front of you guys shortly.
Yeah.
You know, we'll blink twice and it'll be here, so that is, that is forthcoming, but we still have this year to finish, luckily with budget amendments and everything else. I don't really have anything too exciting to tell you guys going through this year. Excuse us.
I'm ready to start budget, I'll take it.
Colleen doesn't want us working on budget just yet, is what I was taking, so. Anyhow, cash, we're set, we're setting fine on cash, we still have our airport reimbursements out, Matt and I had even talked about that specifically today, that we're, we're still waiting on that piece, so when we look at airport cash, yes, airport cash does look, does look a little bit down, but that is, reimbursements are forthcoming, and we will have those taken care of. As far as budget versus actual, we're setting about 66 percent of the year, you know, as we finished up February, really, the highlights, I'll tell you what, sales tax is, is up for the year, even over our budget number, which is a good piece, just a little aside here, as we were talking about budgeting for next year, I need to mention that we, we started looking at budgeting our restricted sales tax funds and those roll forward of funds, and based on where we're sitting right now and where I projected we're going to finish the year, for the first time in at least the last three years, if not the last four years, we're not going to have to budget a subsidy to those sales tax funds as we open up the budget process, so that is honestly good news. We have seen a rebound in sales tax, and we're finally back to where, where we had projected it to be, so that, that's good news and something to move forward on, just an aside related to that. If you look down the rest of those departments, kind of with budget amendments and with everything kind of going on, seasonality and those kind of things, there's not any of these budget expenditures within the general fund that are out of line. We did not have a record month, Betty, this month, in hotel motel tax collections, as it being Christmas and those kinds of things, that sometimes we thought we would have maybe set another record, we didn't, but it was within about $500 of our best collection yet, so hotel motel tax. And economic development continues to be up. That said in mind, we do have a couple of other things coming on, we'll talk about part of that economic development tonight as we get a little later in the agenda, but you know, we do have quite a few economic development projects forthcoming that we need to keep in mind, and so we need all the hotel motel tax we can, to make sure we can pay for roads and those kind of things that will be going in.
Is the expense piece just a timing thing?
Expense, yes, yes, is, is really all timing, as far as that goes out. We have, we have a big payment that we actually pay out of economic development each year. As you remember, when we bought the industrial tract?
Yeah.
We committed to paying back $50,000 a year. Well, I don't worry about paying back that $50,000 until we get to the end of the year, and we just pay it out at that point, so that's why, that's why we're so far under. As far as what goes to the chamber and what gets paid for Main Street, both of those payments are 100 percent in there. We also had some additional expenses in there this year related to part of the extension of utility services and some matching money that we had expected to do out of park, and so those, you know, we're going to have to do based on the contracts that were signed, so all of that rolling in there kind of kicks out the line by that number squared and set. If you look overall, you know, I mean, we're setting still pretty strong within our general fund, you know, our net increase for the year, you know, right at about $100,000 right now. As, as the rest of our summer expenditures come on, our parks and our rec park, once we see that expenditure come on, we'll, we'll get down closer to really what's going to be a breakeven number within, within the general fund, but still, good news as far as that goes. If you look at the utility piece, you know, revenues are still tracking up there, our electric expenses are up a little bit based on budget, really, the wholesale cost of electric is a significant portion of that, but as you'll see, our revenues are also up related to that number, so kind of have to compare those numbers in peace. We do have a few extra expenses this year that have come in with electric, and we'll probably continue to see those go up. We just talked today about, about another $25,000 in tree trimming expense that you will see coming through here over the next four to five months, hopefully finishing out before the end of the fiscal year. Next year, we'll budget in some significant dollars specifically related to that, so that's really going to be expense, as far as I'm concerned there, that's out of line. Rest of those are really numbers that, that we expect. Again, overall net income showing from the utility piece, we have not made the full transfer out, you know, that, that we could at this point, again, I'm only transferring out what we need to transfer out as the cash is needed within the general fund, so if you're looking at that transfer piece, that's why net income is a little higher than, than what it could be at the end of the day. Questions related to financials? You made a comment, I remember last month or a couple months ago, about doing some audits on the hotel motel deals. Yes. Did you do that, or? We have, we have completed one of the audits, yes, and we're, we are now in working out the exact payment arrangements on what that audit found, so it was in favor of the city, there was some under reporting of hotel motel tax dollars, and so a positive for us as far as that goes, so we will see the recoup of even some additional dollars, and I'll let you know whenever we finally collect those additional dollars and what's there. Mary's been made aware of it, and so as, as we get those collected, we'll do it, probably more than likely, at some point, we'll, we'll start doing maybe some mineral audits on, on some others, but we haven't really scheduled that, Mary and I haven't talked any further about that detail, but we, we will look and based on trends and experience and, you know, the hotel motel tax is one of those things that is a little easier for us to reference, because we can, we can reference back to the confidential sales tax report that's turned in for sales tax itself, use that really as a basis to look at where our potential problem items are related to hotel motel. So, we'll, but we'll work on that and get that kind of ironed out.
Any other questions? Thank you, Russ.
Yes.
We've taken consideration item eight, we received recommendation from the Prairie Plan Commission on a site plan review on application of Design Architect Plus on behalf of the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety for construction of Oklahoma Highway Department Troop K Headquarters, to be located at Highway 77 and north-south 319, which just happens to be 25th Street here in Perry. The troops have outgrown their spot up here by the hospital, and they want to put this in. Is anybody familiar where this site is? I think it's a good location, helps ODOT out, because they don't have to mow so much if these guys get on it. It does fall within the guideline and the zoning, as you can read through your note, the notes here, it puts different bullets, it does have traffic considerations from the highway and from 25th Street, so they recommend we take the action necessary to improve this zoning for this and site plan.
No zoning change, it's, it's the site plan.
It's zoning for, is C2, and this is CO, is the office, so it's allowed within the C2. I'm ready.
Make a motion, will you approve this?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Stroller?
Yes.
Demant?
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Item nine, if you read through it, it may have confused you a little bit, so you read through it a couple of times, then talk to Mary and see if you can straighten it out.
Actually, Bryce.
Bryce, I can't give him too many, but it's consideration for approval of First Amendment to the ambulance service agreement, and I will let Bryce go in.
As a part of the ballot question, there was a 10 percent set aside for first responders for grants, this is EMT providers, it's for first responders. You know, they're hoping that, that groups of folks out there in the, in the rural areas, it could be here, set up first responder groups so they can get out there ahead of the, ahead of the ambulance. That money can also be used for grants, so 10 percent of that is taken out, the DA that prepared the, the original ambulance agreements did not include that in the formula calculation, and I guess I didn't catch it, I mean, it was her document, and it looked fine to me. She actually says we're going to be getting more money because of this, because of a calculation difference, or at least that was the email, but the truth is, is the way it's set out now, setting aside that 10 percent is correct, that's the way the voters voted for it, so we would recommend approval of this First Amendment.
I don't see how you take that 10 percent and we get more money. That doesn't happen.
Well, I don't either, I mean, and I haven't, no, makes no sense to me, that's what she said in her email, but it is currently the way that the voters approved it, 10 percent set aside, and then we are based on population within the ambulance district. As you know, Morrison has gone south to Stillwater, so that changed some of those numbers. I think our percentage is 60...
It's about two-thirds.
Yeah.
I think it's 67 or something.
Yeah, 67 percent.
About two-thirds.
But that's 60, 67 percent of 90 percent of the money that's coming in, because there's that 10 percent set aside. That, that, the millage tax revenue is, I'm surprised it's not here, because they said it was going to be paid, and of course, that's filling a giant hole that was otherwise in our budget, so.
Make a motion, we approve the amendment.
Second.
Do we have a second?
It is right.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or any concerns?
We talk every year about putting shades.
Well, but we put things, that helps some.
But we do every year.
There's no money in the budget for shades, sorry. The shine would, the shine would be a lot worth at Collins than over here.
That's right. Have a vote here on this item.
Stroller?
Yes.
Martin?
I'm going to change.
Yes.
Duke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Next item, number 11 is to, oh, no, I'm on number 10, consider approval amendment of development agreement with 3S leasing LLC. Mary, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I can start off, and Bryce can chime in if he needs to. Plans and specs have been prepared for the road, and utilize the geotechnical investigation report, and so based on that, the cost of stabilizing the subsurface increased the road cost substantially, and the, what we're recommending now is that the agreement be amended, and we have at your, at your stations around the table have included the most current agreement, that we've worked through the details with 3S. In an effort to simplify this, it's, you know, recommended that the agreement, the 3S leasing LLC will construct the road at their cost and then give us the difference, so it would be, the purchase price would be $145,000, the road cost is capped at $120,000, and anything over $120,000, 3S would be responsible for, anything under $120,000 would be a savings to the city. Bryce, at this point, do you want to talk anything more about that?
Well, well, just to tell you that we checked out the, the prices that came in to make sure, because you know, you want to make sure that you're not getting, you're not getting done, and so we checked it with ODOT, and we checked it with Evans and Associates, and our engineer checked it, and as against the ODOT prices, a lot of times, the prices depend on the size of the job, okay, but based on a similar sized job, this was very well priced, if not a little bit underpriced. The engineer approved it, and Evans and Associates, you know, they, they thought it was a, they thought it was a good price. You know, we're thinking we're probably getting a, you know, $200,000 road here for, for $120,000 maximum. Now, this road's going to be 30 feet wide, and in fact, when you go down to the turning radius, there was a question, was the radius big enough, and, and Blaine kind of laughed, and he said, when you get down there, it's going to kind of look like a parking lot, because, you know, the, the radius is going to be so large. You know, the property, we actually got on the property today and drove it, and it's one thing to say that it goes down, and then it's another thing to actually drive it and see the ravine that comes through, because there's a ravine that, that comes through, and that ravine is going to be corrected in two locations. If you look at the plan, it's going to be corrected here on, on 35th Street, you know, it's going to be corrected there, and then there's going to be a bunch of, you know, pipes put down there to channel, to channel the road. You know, what we think we're getting here is we're getting, you know, a premier industrial road that will help us sell a bunch of other lots, and we're getting, you know...
And paid to lots.
Two-thirds, maybe three-quarters of our money back on what we paid for the property, so the city administration's thrilled about the amendments to contract. Now, what we did on Friday, you know, we just, we, we got the, the engineering stuff, and we sent them a draft with the leads and underlines, but the, but the rough of it, Mary has said, what they're going to do is they're going to make sure title's okay, and title is okay, because we just acquired this property and we haven't done anything to it, so title, okay, and then they're going out there and building this road. That's before we transfer the deed, they're going to build the road, and they're going to turn in the invoices, and we have to accept the road, okay, and then, when that is done and we've accepted it, then they're going to tender us $25,000 plus, if this road doesn't cost $120,000, any difference, any, any additional amount that it didn't cost them, and at that point, we deed them the property. Now, in talking to them, their business... And title is okay because we just acquired this property and we haven't done anything to it. So title, okay. And then they're going out there and building this road. That's before we transfer the deed. They're going to build the road and they're going to turn in the invoices and we have to accept the road, okay? And then when that is done and we've accepted it, then they're going to tender us twenty-five thousand dollars plus if this road doesn't cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, any difference, any, any additional amount that it didn't cost them. And at that point, we deed them the property. Now, in talking to them, their business, they say, has, has grown to the point that they really can't tell us what they're going to build because it keeps growing. From the initial building that they built as compared to how much business they have, you know, they're talking about bigger and maybe a multi, you know, several buildings. So we are getting, we think, we, we think this is a great deal and will be a great industry, not only out in the park, but serving the, the Perry community. And we recommend it's approved.
So. Are we going to acquire something equalling up to a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar road and twenty-five thousand.
So if the road costs a hundred thousand dollars.
Then we get forty-five thousand dollars.
Then we get forty-five thousand. So whatever the road and the money is going to equal up to a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Right.
So if the road costs a hundred and sixty thousand.
Then we get, we get the road.
They're going to pay, they're going to pay.
The difference.
The difference.
Yep.
Are they operating in this area now?
Yes.
They say they are.
Where are they operating at then?
I don't know, but it's quite a drive.
They said an hour away.
It's an hour away and so that, they're really anxious to, you know.
If, if we sign this, they're going to start, I, I, we told them today that, that they could start mobilizing.
Yeah.
So we're not going to have, we're not going to see them building the road and putting a building up at the same time?
They'll do the road first.
Yeah, they don't, they're not even going to get a title. But, but they are, I mean, you know, they're, they're, they're an hour away right now. And we did tell them today, if we get this sign, that they could get out there and, you know, set some.
Are they operating underneath the company name Three, Three S Leasing?
Three S Leasing, I assume so.
Has that seen either equipment anywhere, any trucks seen, things like that? So I was just wondering if that's their.
I don't know.
Did we execute the contract?
Yes.
We approved a month or so ago.
Yes, we did. And this provision, this contract provides in, right before the signature page, we did get that page in, right?
Page nine.
Yeah, on page nine.
Item Q.
Item Q, that the other agreement that we, that we approved is superseded and the old agreement's null and void. So we provided for that there.
The, the one issue I had with, with changing it is that, and I go back to when we first talked about it and we were thinking we could build a road for fifty-five thousand, build that in, and then it went to, what, sixty-five? It's really going to cost us eighty and now it's a hundred and twenty of our cost. And it, I'm at a point where I'm kind of thinking maybe we ought to have a bid and fight, you know? I mean, I understand that, I, I mean, that's just my opinion, is that. Here's the issue, I don't know who threw out fifty, fifty thousand or even a hundred thousand six months ago. They're way out of their, way out of ballpark. You put this road together like a, like a twenty-six foot wide or twenty-four foot wide county road, the same length, and it costs you a hundred thousand dollars more. Guarantee you, because I'll bid them, you know, time and time again.
I think the scope of the, of the design was much different when we first started talking. And, and part of it is, we didn't know what the soil was. And that is by far the lion's, the soil's.
Stabilization raised at twenty-eight thousand for the, for the dust.
For the dust.
And eighteen thousand to mix, we even checked those prices with, with the state and those, those prices are good. It's three hundred tons of this concrete dust. And that's what makes it, if you run out there and run up the road, it's what makes it something other than a gravel road. It makes it almost look like a concrete.
It adds stability to it.
Yeah, it adds stability. So, you know, the truth is, is if we bid it, it would undoubtedly be more because they'd have to include profit, bonds, surety bonds. And, you know, you take a look at the, the milling work, which is coming up here. I mean, we got an incredible bid there. The other two bids were as much as twice as much, right? So, well, that shows that there could be variation. But it's forty-seven thousand dollars worth of rock, right? And it's twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of stability stuff and then it's eighteen thousand dollars to prepare that. And then there's culverts and then there's machinery, there's a small amount of mobilization. It just, it, it just gets expensive. And, and what we're asking for is not twenty or twenty-four, twenty-six, it's going to be thirty feet wide.
So if we do this tonight, it's locked in?
Yeah, this.
Actually, they have signed, they've already signed the agreement. And we're just waiting on, you know, whether or not the city council tonight approves it and then it'll be a go.
Do they know about how long it will take to, to construct the road?
I'm trying to remember because I, I was thinking of the milling, they said like three days on the milling, but I can't remember what they said. It's, it's not very long, I mean.
Well, they, they have to have title to the property in order to build a building.
Yeah.
And, and they're wanting to get here. I did not have a time period in there because before we transfer anything, they have to have the road done. So it's them first.
Well, my concern would be a timeframe issue because what I'm hearing is rock is getting harder and harder by the day you come by. So what if they get, get to that point and they can't rock the road, you know, if they can't get the rock?
Yeah, the main thing is, is the hauling of the rock is really getting, making it hard to come by.
Rock is hard to get.
Well, they're out of Texas and I don't know if they're hauling it from Texas or what. But their, but their guy, I mean, I think he's got, I think he's got, I think he's got quotes out there because what we did is they gave us a higher price and then we cut it down by, we cut it down by ten percent and they locked in the prices on, on Friday. I, you know, I think they have good prices.
Their road person is actually out of northeast Oklahoma, not out of Texas. So there, at least that's where he is at the current time and has been for the last several months that we've been working with him. So he's actually, can't remember if it's Wilberton, I think. Isn't that where it is?
Gordon, are you good with this?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve the amended agreement with Three S.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions, comments, concern?
Striller.
Yes.
DeMant.
Give you a weak yes. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
He won't capitalize.
Not bold.
Yes. And Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Nation. Yes.
Wade.
Water.
Yeah.
Yes, exclamation point.
Old mine capitalized.
Old mine, please.
We'll put a smaller font for Marvin.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Maybe in italics. In French, maybe. This is approval, consider approval for the ACH or what? ACH origination agreement for OSI, OSI with the First Bank and Trust Company Agreement. What this does, it puts two more names on the agreement to sign documents, checks and make deposits. That would be our city manager, Mary Ruff, and Autumn Jardo. Jardo, yeah.
Make a motion, we approve the agreement.
Second.
Questions?
Striller.
Yes.
DeMant.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Water.
That's a strong yes, Dixie.
Thank you. Item twelve, consider canvas of bids on milling up the runway located in property Charles Machine Works located at nineteen fifty-nine West Firth, Perry, Oklahoma. And Matt's going to cover this for us. Matt?
As you see, the, we, we went out for public notice, we posted it in the paper, we put it online at i-square-band, i-square-feet.com. So we got out to quite a few contractors because those services, internet services actually attract, you know, send out emails out to other contractors. The only reason I'm saying that is to show that we did do public notice and due process. We had a pre-bid meeting and Evans and Associates and Haskell Lemon showed up. We went out to the project, made sure everything was correct and proper according to what the public notice stated, answered any questions they had. And then at the, I, I filled quite a few phone calls that were, contractors received the internet option, internet posting and answered questions for them. And on Wednesday, the thirteenth, we had a bid opening. As you can see, the, the results, we, we requested the, the bids to come in at two different ti, two different styles. One was a lump sum turnkey project. They milled it, they hauled it, they dumped it. And then the other one was they milled it and then we would take our guys and arc trucks and tractor and gather everything and haul it down to our property just south of the, I guess technically it's south of the railroad, but south, southeast of it, I guess. You can see that we included the list of people that showed up for the opening and who supplied with bids, it was Evans and Associates, A&amp;A Asphalt, and TJ Campbell. As you can see, the lowest one was A&amp;A Asphalt. And so I started doing research on them, got references from a couple of cities and a couple of private entities. And the, the recommendations came back with resounding. Both cities have been working with them for, one of them, the city of Broken Arrow has been working with them for about nineteen years. They consider them one of the top three in northeastern Oklahoma. And so the city of Jinks had used them on various sizes of jobs, small ones to very large ones. There was a, Durham Asphalt Services had also used them on a, like a Target parking lot. And so when I asked them how quick they would be able to mobilize and get started, they mentioned that, well, there's a lot of rain coming in, supposedly a fifty percent chance of rain on Thursday and they could start as soon as that. That kind of rushes us because I've got to allow Charles Machine Works to remove the electrical lights for the runway before we get started. And so my recommendation is to go with the A&amp;A Asphalt out of Broken Arrow.
Which option?
The, for them to mill and haul because it's only a mere five thousand more for them to haul it.
And that is option.
Proposal number one.
Yes, proposal number one, I'm sorry.
And I know that proposal two, I might add in here, proposal two includes, provides for the city crews to haul it and use our equipment. And for the approximate difference, I just felt like, you know, we have plenty for our street department to do without spending several days doing this. And so I felt like it was a good use of, of funds to go ahead and have A&amp;A do the, the turnkey project and have them haul and, you know, take it away, take it to our location. So, so I am recommending the higher amount, but I think it's a good, a good use of funds.
We do apologize for not getting you this and the other contract, you know, in your, in your deals so that you could study it. But we did email the draft of the, of the Three S agreement to you, but it, it changed today as, as we took out the underlines and switched up some of the language. Both of these deals came together right here at time to file it out and we were very happy that we were able to prepare them and get signatures on them for you today. But let me just run you through the, the contract. The most important part is just up at the top of page two. That paragraph, Charles Machine Company, Inc. has a airport runway located on its corporate property in Perry as shown as Exhibit G. The owners enter into agreement with CMW or the owner. A contractor will serve as owner's contractor for purpose of the agreement. Owner will provide ingress and egress to CMW's property only at the location designated by owner. CMW will spray paint and no material will be collected on that portion past the sprayed line. Contractor agrees to collect load, transport offload the asphalt from the portion of runway not provided with the painted lines at owner's designated site located approximately four miles from the airport runway. Actually, the main site's going to be when you drive down Sixth Street, pass the YMCA, go over the railroad tracks right there to the, to the left, you know?
Seventh Street.
Oh, is that Seventh? Seventh Street, that's correct. Such a, thank you, Bill. Such amount of asphalt is estimated at eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five square yards at six inch depth coal mill. They will mill up the full thickness of the runway and the areas is definitely transported and offload the millings as directed they're in. Then the, you know, the other issue is if you, if you go on down the contract price, it's a lump sum contract price. If you go up to the provision time, it's really all on page two. They have thirty days to do it and they can start thirty days from the date of executions agreement. They asked us if they could start on Thursday because I understand, but we have some electric. I think there's some electric out there with lights or something that, that we want to take up first. They're the ones on the fast, on the fast track. The, the rest are, they, they put down their supervisor on page four. We have an indemnity, we have a warranty, we have insurance and the amount of the, of the bid. You know, attorney fees, successors and assigns, it's all there. And then we've attached as Exhibit A, the specs, and then we've attached Exhibit B, their bid, and, and Exhibit C is the agreement with Charles Machine Works. And then we have the non collusion affidavit and the business relationship affidavit. And, you know, I think for, for thirty or something, we got that to them and they turned it right around, sent it back, so they must want the work. This thirty-six thousand is substantially less than, than what we, that we thought.
Originally, I think it was about, if I remember right, about sixty-five thousand?
Yeah.
It was a, it was just an estimate Evans had given to, just to give us an idea. It predates me, you know, I think this agreement was approved before I started, but, you know, it looked like, you know, just to give us an idea of whether or not it was something that had to be bid. And since that estimate was over fifty thousand, we, we went ahead and bid it, you know, this amount wouldn't have required us bidding. But we may have gotten a better bid just because we bid, bid it. I mean, you just never, you never know, so.
I did kind of start asking a few questions about, you know, trying to figure out why they were so much different than the others. And boiled down to is they, they got a lot of hot mills, or hot asphalt projects going on, but the milling machine is just sitting there. And so they looked at it as an opportunity to get it working and getting, having some revenue coming in for the machine.
Makes sense. Has this been budgeted? Do we budget that?
This will have to be in addition to our budget. You know, I mean, the street still has room in their expenditure to absorb it, but once we, once we put it in, because we didn't know it was a budget, sixty thousand dollars, a budget twenty thousand dollars, you'll, you'll see a budget in there.
And were we, were we always going to have somebody else do that or was the city been originally?
To, I think what it was is we would have to hire, we'd have to contract for the milling part of it. But there was some thought that possibly the city with our trucks and our employees, you know, would load, you know, it would get loaded into the city truck and then the city truck would haul it to our location. But for the amount of the difference, I mean, we could do, we could do that. It was twenty-nine thousand, five eighty-six, sixty-five if we wanted to do that. But for, you know, another five or six thousand dollars, A&amp;A would do the turnkey, they would do it all. And I just felt like it was a good, you know, the extra money so that our street crews can do what they normally do and not be tied up.
If you'll notice on the, the bid summary, basically it looks like the other two contractors, Campbell and Evans and Associates, you know, one of them was for a dollar twenty-one a square yard and they just to haul it, they doubled it to two forty-two a square yard. And the same thing with Evans and Associates, whereas A&amp;A Asphalt, their difference was a dollar fifty-seven for square yard without hauling and less hauling it, a dollar ninety-five. So they increased it forty cents, you know, roughly forty-three cents a cubic, a square yard.
And the other thing, our, the, our trucks are not large trucks and they don't carry a lot. So I, we were, we were concerned about being able to keep up. Yeah. And, you know, keep, because, you know, the thing is, you know, they want to come in and mill it and get, and finish. And I could foresee that, you know, the milling machine would be sitting there waiting on a city truck to make its rounds and get back, you know? Even though we dedicate, you know, more than, you know, more than one truck, obviously. But I just don't know if we could have kept up, you know, with the trucks that we have.
Well, and then we've got maintenance and gas and everything that goes along with that. If we, you know, tear the tire or something, that's going to be a, it's going to spend on us.
I mean, we can certainly do it if, you know, if the council feels like we should, but I just feel like that we should do the turnkey and have A&amp;A do the complete. But I just feel like that we should do the turnkey and have A&amp;A do the complete milling and hauling.
Yeah, because we're thrilled with the price. I mean, the prices.
New motion.
How long did they feel like it would take them to do that?
Three days.
Three days? Are we taking it all the way down to dirt?
Yes.
What's this, what's this deal about painted lines? Are they saving part of the runway?
Yeah, they are saving the taxiway. And we went out there at the pre-bid meeting.
On the south end?
No, well, it actually runs east and west. But where it comes out of the hangar, it goes in. But yeah, it is on the south half. But where the.
Got the diagram.
I included it in the packet, but I don't have it with me. But where the, where the taxiway starts to radius out, right there, basically it comes out about ninety or ninety-five feet back from the edge of the runway. And at seventy-five foot radius, there's a joint there that's just a straight cut already. And so that's where the line is and basically everything west of that line. So everything from that approach and the entire runway is coming out. And we also, because due to the train and possibility of blocking the roads, we have alternate dump sites and alternate routes that keeps them out of town.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Proposal one.
Which option?
Well, the agreement, that is option one. That's the whole, that's A&amp;A proposal one.
Second.
Is that a strong second?
That's a low. Yes.
All right.
Do you amend your motion?
Strong bill, I think. Marvin, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I thought so.
Very strong.
It was a strong second.
It was a strong second.
Okay.
I could hear you.
Yes.
Demand.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
I don't know. Yes.
Warner. Yes.
Any new businesses coming for the council?
I think it's pretty great.
Make a motion, adjourned.
Second. Motion second.
Sterling.
Yes.
Demand.
Yes.
Duke. Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.